Okay, um, good evening everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting June twentieth twenty twenty four at six P M at the Estill County Board of Education boardroom. Located on two fifty-three Main Street in Urban Kentucky. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and we always stand and start by saying our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. Um, there's a sign in sheet as you come into the boardroom. I'd like to remind everyone to sign in. Uh, Mr. Brock, do we have any revisions to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
First on our agenda then, moving right along, we have action items. And first on the list, we have consideration for approval of the Frisky or the Family Resource F Y twenty-five budget. Would you like to discuss that, Mr. Brock?
Yes, so uh, this is something we do every year. The only change this year is uh, South Urban did get approved for its own uh, family use service center. So we have hired a coordinator out there, our manager. There are some additional funds that come into the district uh, this year. And so that's the only really change over previous years. It's my recommendation, we approve the budget.
Um, I need a motion for approval of the Frisky F Y twenty-five year budget. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do we have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a four oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of the F Y year twenty-five bond depository. Mr. Brock?
Uh, so this approval would be good for two years and we would go with uh, citizens who we've been with before. It is my uh, recommendation that we approve the fiscal year twenty-five bond depository.
So moving right along, I need a motion to approve the F Y twenty-five bond depository. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Not? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Uh, next on our agenda, item C, we have consideration for approval of the treasury bonds. Mr. Brock?
Yeah, and that's again, one of those things that we have to do every year. Uh, it's something that uh, we have to do for paying our bond payments and so it's my recommendation that we approve the treasurer's bond.
Um, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's bond as discussed. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, moving right along, next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of the K S B A policy updates. And approval of the annual update, the first reading and review of the procedures update.
So every year, uh, depending upon what happens with legislature new laws, uh, K S B A will draft policies to comply with those laws, sends them out to the district. Uh, no different this year, they sent them out to us. Uh, Mr. Norton and I have talked about them. We sent them out to the directors. The directors have looked at them. Uh, we've made some revisions to them. You have that in your packets. Uh, this would be the first reading and review, so I recommend that we approve uh, as they are in your packets.
So I need a motion to approve the K S B A policy updates and this would be the first reading and review of the procedural updates. Carrie Smallwood makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Car- Carrie makes a second. Sorry, he's been a long day. Do we have uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, I got my peoples mixed up. My kids say I do that with them. They say I call one one name and one the next.
That was the first I did. I did my cat nick and my daughters.
You do the same thing? Um, I'm getting old though. Next, we have consideration for approval of the special education coach facilitator.
So um, prior to um, or this year actually, uh, Ms. Puckett uh, kind of did this role. She actually assisted some with food services and some with uh, special education. She's since taken the food services director position. So instead of rehiring that position, we have a need for uh, servicing our special needs population specifically for a coach to work with teachers on co-teaching. But also a facilitator and to help with that position that Ms. Puckett left. Uh, to uh, help with scheduling of five oh fours and A R Cs and paperwork so that Ms. Bryant uh, can do some more reviews and things like that. So I've kind of consolidated one position and repurposed it. But I wanted to bring it before the board and so that's what this position is and it's my recommendation that we approve the coach slash facilitator.
I need a motion for approval of the special education coach slash facilitator. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Um, and Mr. Brock and I talked about this position, just so you all know, and this person is certified.
Yes, it is a certified position.
And so, just so you all know that. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a four oh vote. Motion carries. Um, next, we have consideration for approval of the F Y twenty-four, twenty-five staffing policy and salary schedule.
So um, there's, was quite a bit of work went into this. Uh, every year you all get the staffing policy. Uh, with Esser funds dropping off, there were several positions that dropped off of this staffing policy and some that went away from Esser. And went back to the general fund, the ones that we ended up keeping. And then the way that we pay some of them, uh, Angie and I got together and we've kind of moved some out of Title One to general and back and forth so that it would best benefit the different district and and saving money. Uh, the salary schedule has, uh, there's been some changes on that as well. I talked to Donna earlier this week. Uh, in light of what other districts around us are doing, uh, with coaching stipends and with all of their administrative positions and with their teacher salaries. Uh, it, this reflection, uh, this salary schedule kind of reflects an upgrade in some of those pays and a two percent raise for our uh, staff across the board is what it would be. Uh, so I would like to do more than that and we can look in that in the future, but for sustainability purposes, I think that that's where we're safe at this time. And then we can look for more going forward. So it's my recommendation that we approve.
And Mr. Brock, can you just speak to the um, that, about the fact that we've given raises every year?
Yeah, we have and I think it was seven percent over the last four years and other districts around us had not given any. And I think it's even eight over the last five, Angie, if I'm correct. And then this would be two more, so this would be a clo- uh, can, total of ten over the last six years, ten percent.
And so we were giving raises when other districts weren't and even though we were giving two and three percent at a time.
They were still getting.
They're still getting raises and hours actually adds up to be a lot more.
Yeah, and this gets us above some districts around us, really close to other districts around us, so it might, it keeps us competitive.
Um, do we have any other discussion about it? Okay, if not, I'd like to call for a vote to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five staffing policy and the salary schedule. Sheila Samples makes motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, next, we have consideration approval of district insurance, Mr. Brock.
Okay, so this is, this is twofold. This is uh, this has to do with our liability insurance for buildings. Uh, employee liability insurance, uh, for if we were to get sued for somebody doing something wrong. Uh, what's called watercraft, which is kind of a odd uh, category. And uh, any damage from wind or hail or earthquake, so that's this insurance. That's part of it. The other part of it would be our workers' comp. So it's two different things we've, we're looking at. Workers' comp, the best option definitely is KIMI. Uh, I think we should go back with it. It did go up a little bit this year. The reason for that is, is because they carry a three-year cycle and it's the amount of money that they, that we have actually had claims over three years. And we had a goo- very good year drop off and then we have one year that's still on there where we had a lot of claims. It should drop off, I think, and if not next year, the following year. So it did go up a little bit, but it's still the best option for us. The other insurance I was talking about with the buildings and employees and stuff, uh, we were anticipating a twenty-five percent uh, increase in that premium this year, uh, from uh, Liberty Mutual who's, who we have had in the past. So I spoke with Angie and I thought it wise for us to open that up and last board meeting we did, we opened it up for bid. We got three uh, bids. Uh, Assured Partners brought us two options. And then there was London Insurance Agency brought us another option. Uh, Liberty Mutual is, to me, is out because it's about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, which is about a hundred thousand dollars more than it was in the previous year. It's four sixty-four, so it went up actually twenty-six percent instead of twenty-five percent. But we were left with two pretty good options. Uh, the London Insurance was the cheaper of the options. It come in about three twenty-five. No, three twenty-eight with uh, with our S R O law enforcement and everything on it. But then uh, Assured Partners brought us another option, uh, which is the Bluegrass Risk Management. And what it is, is it's a fund where they invited thirty-six uh, districts in the state of Kentucky that uh, are traditionally uh, low claim districts. Uh, it does have better coverage. It has lower deductibles and in the long run, I think it is the, probably the better deal for us. And Donna and I talked about this uh, yesterday, yesterday. Uh, it is a little more expensive than the insurance company in London came in, but with it being a fund after this first year, uh, the superintendents that are uh, in charge of the districts of the fu- that's in the fund will actually decide what happens with the money and the excess. So there's the potential for districts to get lower premiums or actually to get money back. Uh, it's a lot like KISB it was, but the, where KISB went under uh, was because they also tried to carry workers' comp and workers' comp is kind of one of those uh, shots in the dark. You can be, kind of like ours is, we were very good, very good, very good, very good, then we had one bad year. And uh, so this doesn't carry workers' comp, that's why we're going with KIMI. Uh, I've actually thought and looked and prayed about it a whole lot and talked to Donna about it. And her and I, uh, and I know she talked to you all about it. So it's my recommendation that we go with Bluegrass Risk Management and KIMI for our insurance.
Okay.
And it would be through Assured Partners.
Okay, so um, I need approval of the district insurance um, plan as Mr. Brock um, relayed and discussed with us. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Got the names right this time? Do we have any discussion? We spent a long time yesterday talking about the risk and the benefits with each and basically this company is called savings.
It is.
So if we're not high utilizers of services, in the end, we can end up with a pocket of money that'll come back to the district. And we did a similar thing, I was sharing with Mr. Brock with hospice not too long ago. I'm on the hospice board. We did a similar um, insurance plan with them.
Yeah, I, I want to be very clear, uh, at, uh, this first year, it does cost a little bit more than the other bid was. The other bid was from a, an insurance company in London. And the, the company that was going to do it is a company that does schools in lots of other states, but they're just trying to get into Kentucky. It was a good option, uh, and it is cheaper, but long term, I think this brings our district more benefit.
We don't have any further discussion. I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, next on our agenda, we have our consent items. Mr. Brock, would you like to discuss any of those?
Uh, it's just uh, the minutes from the regular May meeting and the special call meeting, treasurer report as you all have, so we can obviously pay our bills. Uh, travels, uh, my travels. We have some uh, MOAs uh, that we have to, to redo every year. Uh, New Vista, Mountain Comp and Second Mile. Uh, they have all been very beneficial to our district. If you all remember, we just started Second Mile last fall. They've been, they've been very good with, for our students. All these are good partnerships and uh, with educational recovery leadership employee, uh, with K D E, we have somebody that's working with them. We have to approve that as well, so. Uh, and then the uh, data scene is the uh, MacBooks that we have at uh, West Urban and uh, at Estill Springs. They'll send one out from time to time that we have to uh, approve, so it's my recommendation that we approve all consent items.
We need a motion to approve the consent items. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. It brings us down to the superintendent's report.
So we have hired several employees um, this summer. We've got a few more uh, to hire. I know there was interviews going on today. Uh, for counseling position at the middle school. I think Ms. Bryant interviewed today for a special needs position. And then there's a couple more positions that we have interviews set up for. We pretty much are completely staffed. We just have a few uh, places, like I said, with ongoing interviews. And I did get some recommendations today, uh, that were not official until site-based consults on. So we've about got all of our positions filled. Uh, we get, I gave you all the A D A last board uh, meeting where we ended up at. And uh, I was trying to look here. K S B A Summer Institute is in July, the nineteenth and the twentieth in Bolling Green. Uh, and I know you and I are going. If anybody else wants to attend, you're, you're more than welcome to. Uh, and just to close out the year, graduation went well. Uh, thoughtful classroom, uh, professional development, uh, went well. There was two days district wide and then they broke out into elementary, middle and high school. Thoughtful classroom is uh, what we're bringing in next year to add on to our standards work and our progress monitoring. Uh, and it is uh, research-based engagement strategies and brings rigor uh, to the classroom. We'll have a plan to roll that out next year. The coaches have already met and they're talking about what rolling those strategies out will look like in their buildings. Like I said, the teachers already have two days of the, of the strategy, so they are uh, familiar with them. What we don't want to happen is to have this professional development, have all these strategies and then nothing happen with it. So that's what, that's what the plan is moving forward. Is to roll that out and then ha- have evidence of those being used in the classroom. Uh, we've got, uh, I already mentioned K S B A. We've got K S A coming up in July. Uh, leadership retreat and a lot of principals and assistant principals in district are going to that. Right after that, following that on July the thirtieth, we will have our leadership retreat as a district. And uh, Mr. Cornet, uh, Ms. Williams and Ms. O'Brien are taking the lead on planning that. I've got s- some things I want to input as well. Uh, one thing I am trying to do is kind of step aside and let some others have uh, more responsibility uh, this year. Not that I didn't do it last year, but uh, we've got the leadership retreat and our welding program is moving forward uh, at the A T C. It is going to be a pretty significant cost to the district, but it's something that is very much needed. Our students need it. They've asked for it. And it's an opportunity since we can provide it to them. I don't see how we, we pass that up, so. That's my report.
Do we have any questions? If not, um, I need a motion to go into closed session. Um, we have some. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. So we ask everyone to leave and then we'll call you back in a few minutes.
Uh, let me text Jeremy and make sure that he turns off the, and as soon as he does, I will let you know. Uh, let me text Jeremy and make sure that he turns off the, and as soon as he does, I will let you know.
So I need a motion to open our session back.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you shooting at our time?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we went into closed session. Uh, it was the time of year to do the superintendent evaluation. And at this time, I would like to report on that um to everyone. Um, Mr. Brock, as you know, this is his first year being our superintendent. And we as a board feel that he has done an exemplary job in leading the district. Um, some of the things that we talked about was just his leadership. Um, he works well with the board and others. He has a clear vision. Um, engineering success has been his theme. And we felt like that he definitely had been following through on that. He's a strong academic leader. And some of the goals he has is to make us a distinguished district by twenty twenty five. He truly is an academic leader. He's very fair, but he's firm. We feel like he collaborates well with others. He developed a new teacher academy. And all of those things have been very successful. Um, we felt he's very personable. Um, he attends a lot of extracurricular and sporting events to show support for the students. Um, he works well with all of his academic coaches and central office staff. He's developed several new mentorship programs for teachers and new hires. Um, and we feel like he was very fair but firm. He's been very budget conscious. Um, he has shared strong leadership and stewardship of the
Okay. Um, so I need a motion to open our session back.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Are you shooting at our time sign?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we went into closed session. Uh, it was the time of year to do the superintendent evaluation and at this time I would like to report on that um to everyone. Um, Mr. Brock, as you know, this is his first year of being our superintendent and we as a board feel that he has done an exemplary job in leading the district. Um, some of the things that we talked about was just his leadership. Um, he works well with the board and others. He has a clear vision. Um, engineering success has been his theme and we felt like that he definitely had been following through on that. He's a strong academic leader and some of the goals he has is to make us a distinguished district by 2025. He truly is an academic leader. He's very fair, but he's firm. We feel like he collaborates well with others. He developed a new teacher academy and all of those things have been very successful. Um, we feel he's very personable. Um, he um attends a lot of extracurricular and sporting events to show uh support for the students. Um, he works well with all of his academic coaches and central office staff. He's developed several new mentorship programs for teachers and new hires. Um, and we feel like he was very fair but firm. He's been very budget conscious. Um, he has um shared strong leadership and stewardship of the finances within our district. Um, and he currently is seeking some grant opportunities for us. He's building leadership and collaborative relationships for us with all the local um colleges and universities. And he continues to develop and network with community partners. Um, he's been very influential leader, uh lobbying for funding for our middle school. He's very politically aware and we felt that he's doing a great job with that. We always do like some rapid fire words to describe Mr. Brock and some of the things that the board felt was Mr. Brock was a Christian man. He was very ethical. He was very faithful to his family, his wife, and his children. Um, he's very caring. He has positive attitude. He's fair but firm. He's very hardworking. Um, he's all about the kids. He's very collaborative, um personable, um kind. We also said he was a good cook, but he doesn't ever feed the board. So, um, he's fearless and we are so um proud of Mr. Brock. We're proud of his first year. And um for those of you that don't know, he now is a resident of Estill County and we're so glad to have him here. Um, so we are giving him an exemplary evaluation. We will continue with his contract as it is um and we'll be moving forward. So we'll continue in engineering success, Mr. Brock.
Yep, thank you.
And I'll give this to Rebecca. Okay. And um with all of that being said, um that brings us down to our board member forum.
Mr. Simpson said there was no comments.
Okay. No public comments. Do we have any comments from our board? Nothing? Okay. Um, I think it's just important to let everyone know that we have posted a position for a board member.
Mm-hmm.
As most of you know, Brian Covey resigned. Um, there's um has been posted on our um school webpage, uh our district webpage, also in the local newspaper. If you're interested in a board position, please um fill out your paperwork and let us know. Um, also, um, what else was I gonna say, Mr. Brock? The board position.
Uh, just fill out an application. It's sixty days.
Sixty days. That's what I was gonna say, sixty days. Um, so we have sixty days to fill that position.
Yeah, and that was from the May meeting.
Yeah. And Brian Covey's um district is called Schoolhouse. You can get all the information at the courthouse from Kim Charles. She'll be happy to share that information.
It's on the website too.
And it's on the website and you can call Mr. Brock. Um, but we uh need another board um board seat filled. Um, I think that was the big thing that I had.
I think that's it.
Do you have anything else?
No, just glad to be here and we've had a good year. We're gonna have a better year next year.
Yes, indeed.
All right, so if nothing further, I need a motion to close. Shayla Samples and Care- um Carrie Smallwood. Tammy Hardy. It's been a long day. Tammy Hardy, so at this time this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.
This is what Luca said.